Given the quorum being present, we'll now call the town meeting to order.
Okay, just to remind you that the purple tickets will be, if we ask you to show the tickets for the voting, it'll be purple for the special and they'll be pink for the annual. Warrant for the special town meeting, Monday, June 15, 2015, 7:00 PM. Bristol County, to either of the constables in the town of Freetown greeting, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown, who are qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet in the Freetown Elementary School Auditorium, 43 Bullock Road, East Freetown, Massachusetts, the 15th Day of June, 2015, at 7:00 PM then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Sona Post Office, East Freetown Post Office, the stores of Quick Pick in East Freetown, Junior's Convenience Store, and Freetown Town Hall, and the Communication Center. To the town clerk, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts, May 29, 2015, I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein. Signed, Carlton D. Abbott, Junior, Constable.
Okay, and just so you know before we start, for the special town meeting, all of the articles will be funded from free cash unless it's otherwise specified. So for Article 1, to see if the town will approve the filing of an application with the inter-agency permitting board for the designation of land at Zero South Main Street, map 233, parcel 30.04, as a priority development site pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 43D, or take any other action in relation thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and it requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Yes.
Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Voted unanimously to adopt. Article 2, to see if the town will transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 for projects and preparations related to town compliance with the requirements of the EPA's upcoming draft Massachusetts Small MS4 Permit and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted unanimously. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $2,000 to supplement the town accountant's salary line item and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the town accountant and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $745 representing the town's share of a DCR Volunteer Fire Assistance Program grant to purchase 1,000 feet of new forestry hose for the fire department and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the fire chief, requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the article as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. Article 5, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $4,188 to pay the costs associated with training fire department paramedics to meet the National Emergency Medical Scope and Practice Requirements as adopted by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the fire chief, requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $10,558.94 from the emergency management expense line to the emergency management salary line to pay the personnel costs for communication center, fire department, police department, and shelter staff, which costs were incurred during winter storm Juneau, January 26 to 28, 2015, and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the emergency management director, requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $2,455 to pay for the annual compliance fee for Two County Road assessed by DEP, which amount was not previously appropriated, and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Voted unanimously. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Water Enterprise retained earnings the sum of $60,000 to supplement the operating expenses of the Water Enterprise Fund and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission, requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted unanimously. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to the Water Enterprise Fund the sum of $40,000 to purchase water lines and steel protective sleeves to be installed at the three railroad crossings, Elm Street, High Street, and Copacabana Road, and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission, requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Articles adopted unanimously. For Article 10, I was just asked to let you know that in Article 10, it's to revise the salary figures, but no new money is being appropriated. The money was already voted last spring. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to fix the annual salary and compensation of the highway surveyor and town clerk as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the General Laws as amended for the fiscal year 2015, and/or take any action relative thereto. Highway Surveyor, current compensation $62,019, requested compensation $62,719. Town Clerk, current compensation $49,195, requested compensation $49,895. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and it requires a two-thirds vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $133,665 to pay a portion of the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District transportation cost and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article is adopted unanimously. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,542 for transportation assessment costs and the sum of $31,996 for education assessment costs for the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
I have a motion and second to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Articles adopted unanimously. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, for the purpose of creating a cable television public access enterprise fund and in connection therewith to transfer from free cash the sum of $24,407 representing revenues received by the town for cable license or cable television-related services to said fund to be effective for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and further to transfer from said fund or from previously received cable television license proceeds or otherwise fund a sum of money as a grant for PEG purposes, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement for the expenditure of such funds for cable-related purposes in accordance with law and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article is adopted unanimously. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to transfer $10,000 from free cash for the purpose of updating a three-year actuarial OPEV study and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted unanimously. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise for the purpose of development of affordable senior housing the land located off of Cushinget Avenue in the town of Cushinget, adjacent to a piece of town-owned property at Two County Road, map 245, Lot 90, Freetown, and depicted as Lot 1 on a Cushinget Assessors, map 1, and more particularly described in the deed recorded with the Bristol South Registry of Deeds in Book 1810, page 315, including any assignment of rights held by the town of Cushinget to collect property taxes owed on the property, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey or assign such interest in land or portion thereof to the Freetown Housing Authority or other appropriate public or nonprofit entity for such purposes, all upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute such instruments and documents and take such other action as may be necessary to carry out the vote taken hereunder, including application, acceptance, and expenditure of any grants or gifts that may be available for such purposes, and further to petition the General Court as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, provided that the General Court may make clerical and editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill prior to enactment by the General Court, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee has no recommendation.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $1,500 for preparation of an engineering report to address the environmental conditions at and removal and remediation of contamination, if any, on the land off of Cushinget Avenue in the town of Cushinget, depicted as Lot 1 on a Cushinget Assessors, map 1, and more particularly described in the deed recorded with the Bristol South Registry of Deeds in Book 1810, page 315, including any costs incidental and related thereto, such report to be used by the town to qualify for grants for the cleanup and remediation of the subject property, and/or take any other action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, and the funds will be transferred from free cash. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the article as read, transferring funds from free cash. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to know if, first of all...
You need to say who you are.
Phil McHugh, Bay Shores. I'd like to know if any research or preparation for this report and appropriating this money has been done to find out exactly what is on that land and what's going to happen if it's a brown field, or if there's a lot of work and money involved in this. We go right ahead with the senior housing thing. It's all fine and good, I know we've done this four or five times in the past, and we still don't have any senior housing. Now we're appropriating land from another town, evidently taking off their roles and it'll be our responsibility, but I would like to know if any research has been done in terms of contamination, or what are we getting into? Does anybody know?
Yes, Jack Eglie Town Administrator, through the moderator, Mr. Chairman, I'm Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. Yes, there has been conservative work done, going back to the initial cleanup that was done about with EPA money on the Screw Site property, and conservative subsurface exploration was done at that time, and it continued under a mass development grant that we currently have for purposes of cleaning up and demolishing the Freetown Screw building. Ongoing work is being done to clean up the groundwater underneath the old building. And a lot of work has been done on the adjacent properties to identify the swale. Freetown Screw basically dumped their wastewater out the back door in a pipe into a swale that was on the property that hopefully we'll be able to acquire from Cushinget. And then it ran over through that swale to a lagoon on conservation property owned by Cushinget, down in Cushinget. So we know what's there, we know where it is, and we know what the character of that waste is. This $1,500 will be spent to have our engineering firm, Nobis Engineering, submit an engineering report to the state to mass development, which is the first step to qualify us to secure additional funds, federal funds, EPA funds coming through mass development, to clean up the Cushinget piece. And so, if we're successful in the path that we're following, we will use federal funds to clean up this site and turn it into a clean site that can then be used for the elderly housing. There has been a needs assessment done, and that study is available at Town Hall for anyone who'd like to see it, that says that the project is feasible if we use both the Freetown piece and the Cushinget piece, so that we can get 64 units of senior housing built on that site. It's not feasible with just the site that we have in Freetown. So all of this comes together, we will have, and it might take, it might take a little while, it's taken a little while up to this point, but it's going to take a little while longer to have a clean site that we can then turn around and just all detail in that feasibility analysis that I told you about, which is available at Town Hall, and then have competitive proposals submitted by firms that actually go out and build this housing at their expense with other grant monies that are available, and operate that facility as well. So that's the plan, and I think it's a good one. It seems that a lot of people have looked at this and included the same, that it's a plan worth pursuing. The Housing Authority is in unanimous support of following through with this plan.
All right, I appreciate your answer. I'll just make one comment for the... We've had opportunities in the past to have senior housing, over-55 housing and all that, and it probably looked good, and it probably would have been good if we had gone ahead with it. Some people didn't have certain jealousies or envy about what they were going to have for over-55 people. My last comment is, I would like to see senior housing here in Freetown, okay? Close by, close proximity to shopping and whatever else we have around here. And I know that we have land in, within Freetown, and something that this could be done on. I know that may not happen, but that's my feeling, is that we should be doing it locally. I'm a little wary about taking on somebody else's problem, green fields, brown fields, or whatever, and I just see something... I know you all mean well, and it sounds good, but I just anticipate that I'll be long gone, I'll deserve it before anything is started. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $745,769.50 to undertake repairs to the Richmond Road Bridge, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 4, or any other applicable statutory authority, provided however that the borrowing authorized under this article shall be contingent upon passage of a proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion, referendum question, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21C, Clause K, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a two-thirds vote. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Check.
A motion and a second to adopt the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Just as a programming note, the second part of this is a ballot election that will be next Monday from noon to 8:00 here at the elementary school downstairs. So please remember that also. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 10 of the town's general bylaws, Personnel Classification and Compensation Plan, by deleting the existing language in its entirety and replacing it with the language on file in the offices of the town clerk, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the article as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash a sum of money to be deposited into the stabilization fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a two-thirds vote. The Board of Selectmen will tell us the numbers.
$699,000.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Okay, so just as a recap, the number is $699,000.
Make a motion to approve as read and amended with the $699,000.
Check.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 19 with the amount of $699,000. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article is adopted unanimously. A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn the special town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll give the pink ticket, and the appointed hour having arrived and a quorum being present, we'll now call the annual town meeting to order and ask the town clerk to come forward and read the warrant.
Warrant for the annual town meeting, Monday, June 15, 2015, 7:30 PM. Bristol County, to either of the constables of the town of Freetown greeting, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown, who are qualified to vote in the elections in town affairs, to meet in the Freetown Elementary School Auditorium, 43 Bullock Road, East Freetown, Massachusetts, on Monday, the 15th day of June, 2015, at 7:30 PM then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Sona Post Office, East Freetown Post Office, the stores of Quick Pick in East Freetown, Junior's Convenience Store, Freetown Town Hall, and the Freetown Communication Center. Hereof fail not and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereon to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Freetown, this 28th day of May, anno domini 2015, signed by the Board of Selectmen. To the town clerk, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts, May 29, 2015, I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein, signed, Carlton D. Abbott, Junior, Constable.
All right, just as a note, for the annual town meeting, all articles will be funded from taxation unless otherwise specified. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the town charges for the fiscal year 2016, viz. General Government, Town Reports, Planning Board, Finance Committee, Board of Appeals for Protection of Persons and Property, for Health and Sanitation, for Highways, for Libraries, for Veterans Benefits, for Cemeteries, Town Parks, Interest and Principal and School Loans, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, and unclassified tax titles, Reserve Fund, Bristol County Retirement, Incidentials, Soil Conservation, Council on Aging, Graves' Registration Officer, Cultural Council, Capital Equipment, Capital Building Equipment, improvement rather, and Insurance, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen and it will require a majority vote. So just for anybody that might not have been here before, for each department, you're going to hear the amount that the department has requested, and the amount that the Finance Committee has recommended, and the Board of Selectmen concurs with all of the Finance Committee's recommendations. If you disagree with the recommendation of the Finance Committee, or you have a question about a specific budget, please call out "hold." At the end of the budget, we will vote to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendation for any budget that's not on hold, and then we'll go back to anything that is on hold. For the budget. Okay, number 114, moderator, personnel, requested $413, recommended $413. 122 for the Board of Selectmen, personnel, requested $64,359.86, recommended $64,359.86. Expenses, requested $13,475, recommended $13,475. thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total for Selectmen, requested seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-six cents, recommended seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. For the town administrator, for personnel, requested ninety thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-eight cents, recommended one hundred four thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars, seventy-eight cents. Expenses, requested four thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars, recommended four thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars. Total, requested ninety-five thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars, seventy-eight cents, recommended one hundred nine thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars, seventy-eight cents. For the Finance Committee, personnel, requested zero dollars, recommended five hundred dollars. Expenses, requested one thousand dollars, recommended one thousand dollars. Total, requested one thousand dollars, recommended fifteen hundred dollars. For the Reserve Fund, requested one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, recommended one hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. For the town accountant, for personnel, requested ninety-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars, recommended ninety-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars. For expenses, requested seven hundred, uh, seven thousand, three hundred eleven dollars, recommended seven thousand, three hundred eleven dollars. Total, requested one hundred four thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars, recommended one hundred four thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. For the town audit, requested nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars, recommended nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. For the Board of Assessors, for personnel, requested seventy-two thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars, recommended sixty-two thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars. For expenses, requested fourteen thousand, three hundred fifty dollars, recommended fourteen thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Total, assessors, requested eighty-seven thousand, three hundred nine dollars, recommended seventy-seven thousand, three hundred nine dollars.
Hold.
I have a hold on the assessors. For the Treasurer, for personnel, requested one hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-two cents, recommended one hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Expenses, requested thirty-three thousand, eighty-two dollars, recommended thirty-three thousand, eighty-two dollars. For legal fees, requested forty-five thousand dollars, recommended fifty-five thousand dollars. For management information systems, expenses, requested twenty thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars, recommended twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. For tax title foreclosures, expenses, requested sixty-five hundred dollars, recommended sixty-five hundred dollars. For the town clerk, for personnel, requested eighty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars, recommended eighty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars. Expenses, requested forty thousand, eighty-two dollars, recommended forty thousand, eighty-two dollars. Tot-
Four.
Oh, four thousand, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You could have bought a lot of paper clips with that. I'm sorry, recommended four thousand, eighty-two dollars. Total for the town clerk, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars, recommended eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. For primaries and elections, for personnel, requested six thousand, three hundred sixty dollars, recommended six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Expenses, requested six thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars, recommended six thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars. Total for elections, requested twelve thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars, recommended twelve thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars. For registration, for sale, uh, for personnel, recommended one thousand, fifty-five dollars, requested one thousand, fifty-five dollars. For expenses, requested four thousand, eleven dollars, recommended four thousand, eleven dollars. Registration totals, requested five thousand, sixty-six dollars, recommended five thousand, sixty-six dollars. For the Conservation Commission, for personnel, requested five thousand dollars, recommended five thousand dollars. For expenses, requested five thousand dollars, recommended five thousand dollars. Total for conservation, requested ten thousand dollars, recommended ten thousand dollars. For the Planning Board, for personnel, requested forty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars and four cents, recommended forty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars and four cents. For expenses, requested five thousand dollars, recommended five thousand dollars. Planning Board total, requested forty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars, four cents, recommended forty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars, four cents. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, for personnel, requested seventeen hundred dollars, excuse me, recommended seventeen hundred dollars. For expenses, requested one thousand dollars, recommended one thousand dollars. Zoning Board of Appeals total, requested twenty-seven hundred dollars, recommended twenty-seven hundred dollars. For the Soil Board, personnel, requested seven hundred dollars, recommended seven hundred dollars. For expenses, requested four hundred dollars, recommended four hundred dollars. Total for the Soil Board, requested eleven hundred dollars, recommended eleven hundred dollars. For public buildings and property maintenance, for personnel, requested forty, uh, thirty-four thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars, seventy-eight cents, recommended thirty-four thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. For expenses, requested thirty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars, recommended thirty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars. Total, requested seventy-two thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars, seventy-eight cents, recommended seventy-two thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars, seventy-eight cents. For property insurance, requested one hundred three thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars, recommended one hundred three thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars. For the town reports, requested thirty-five hundred dollars, recommended thirty-five hundred dollars. For D E P has-manned assessment, requested twenty-five hundred dollars, recommended twenty-five For the Police Department, for overtime, requested one hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars, recommended one hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. For personnel, requested one million, three hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars, thirty-eight cents, recommended one million, three hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars, thirty-eight cents. For expenses, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars requested, recommended one hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars. Total for the Police Department, requested one million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, recommended one million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. For the Communication Center, for overtime, requested twenty thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, recommended twenty thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. For personnel, requested two hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, recommended two hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. For expenses, requested thirteen thousand, four hundred seventy dollars, recommended fourteen thousand, uh, thirteen thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. Total for Communication Center, requested two hundred sixty-three thousand, seventy-one dollars, ninety-four cents, recommended two hundred sixty-three thousand, seventy-one dollars, ninety-four cents. For the Fire Department, for overtime, requested one hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars, recommended one hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars. For personnel, requested seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars, recommended seventy-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars. For expenses, requested ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, recommended ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Total for the Fire Department, requested nine hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars, recommended nine hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars. For the Building Department, for personnel, requested one hundred four thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars, forty-three cents, recommended eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-three cents. For expenses, requested seven hundred, uh, seven thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars, recommended seven thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars. Total for the Building Department, requested one hundred twelve thousand, two hundred six dollars, forty-three cents, recommended ninety-seven thousand, four hundred thirty dollars, forty-three cents. For the Gas Inspectors, requested for personnel, ten thousand, eighty dollars, recommended ten thousand, eighty dollars. For expenses, requested zero dollars, recommended zero dollars. Gas Inspectors total, requested ten thousand, eighty dollars, recommended ten thousand, eighty dollars. For the Plumbing Inspectors, for personnel, requested seven thousand, five hundred eighty dollars, recommended seven thousand, five hundred eighty dollars. For expenses, requested zero dollars, recommended zero dollars. Total, requested seven thousand, eight, five hundred eighty dollars, recommended seven thousand, five hundred eighty dollars. For the Sealer of Weights and Measures, for expenses, requested four thousand dollars, recommended four thousand dollars. For the Electrical Inspectors, for personnel, requested sixteen thousand, eighty dollars, recommended sixteen thousand, eighty dollars. For expenses, requested zero dollars, recommended zero dollars. Total for the Electrical Inspectors, requested sixteen thousand, eighty dollars, recommended sixteen thousand, eighty dollars. For Civil Defense, for personnel, requested twenty-six hundred dollars, recommended twenty-six hundred dollars. For expenses, requested twenty thousand dollars, recommended seventeen thousand dollars. Total for Civil Defense, requested twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, recommend nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars. For the Animal Control Officer, for personnel, requested thirty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars, forty cents, recommended thirty thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars. For expenses, requested five thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars, recommended five thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. Total for the Animal Control Officer, requested forty thousand, ninety-two dollars, forty cents, recommended thirty-six thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars. For Forestry, the Tree Warden, for personnel, requested six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, recommended six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. For expenses, requested ten thousand dollars, recommended ten thousand dollars. Total for the Tree Warden, requested sixteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, recommended sixteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. For the Harbor Master, for expenses, requested one hundred dollars, recommended one hundred For School Committee Stifans, for personnel, requested four thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars, recommended four thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars. For Regional School Assessments, for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District Regional Assessment, requested nine million, two hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars, requested nine million, two hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars. For the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District Regional Debt, requested two hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars, recommended two hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars. We'll skip over the total line because one of those is on hold. For the Bristol County Agricultural School, requested thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars, recommended thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars. For the Old Colony Vocational School Assessment, requested one million, six hundred seventeen thousand, eighty-seven dollars, recommended one million, six hundred seventeen thousand, eighty-seven dollars. For the Highway Department, for overtime, requested five hundred dollars, recommended five hundred dollars. For personnel, requested three hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred six dollars, recommended three hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred six dollars. For expenses, requested seventy-eight thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars, recommended seventy-eight thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars. Total for the Highway Department, requested three hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars, recommended three hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars. For Snow and Ice Removal, for overtime, recommended twenty-five thousand dollars, requested twenty-five thousand dollars. For expenses, requested seventy-five thousand dollars, recommended seventy-five thousand dollars. Total for Snow and Ice Removal, requested one hundred thousand dollars, recommended one hundred thousand dollars. For Streetlights, requested ten thousand, five hundred dollars, recommended ten thousand, five hundred dollars. For collec- trash collection and disposal, requested four hundred eight thousand, six hundred fifty dollars, recommended four hundred eight thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. For the Transfer Station, for personnel, requested fifty-seven thousand, twenty-nine dollars, recommended fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars. For expenses, requested eighty-nine thousand dollars, recommended eighty-nine thousand dollars. Total for the Transfer Station, requested one hundred forty-six thousand, twenty-nine dollars, recommended one hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars. For the Cemetery Commission, for expenses, requested nineteen thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars, recommended eleven thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. For Health Inspection Services, for personnel, requested eighty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars, forty-three cents, recommended eighty-four thousand, six hun- uh, eight hundred sixty-five dollars, forty-three cents. For expenses, eight thousand, six hundred thirty dollars, requested, recommended eight thousand, six hundred thirty dollars. Total for the Board of Health, requested ninety-three thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars, forty-three cents, recommended ninety-three thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars, forty-three cents. For the Council on Aging, for personnel, requested one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred twenty dollars and eighty-six cents, recommended one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, eighty-six cents. For expenses, requested seventeen thousand, five hundred ten dollars, recommended seventeen thousand, five hundred ten dollars. Total for the Council on Aging, requested one hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars, eighty-six cents, recommended one hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars, eighty-six cents. For Veteran Services, for personnel, requested eleven thousand dollars, recommended eleven thousand dollars. For expenses, requested one hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, recommended one hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Total for Veteran Services, requested one hundred eighty thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, recommended one hundred eighty thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. For Memorial Day and Veterans Day, requested twenty-two hundred dollars, recommended twenty-two hundred dollars. For the Libraries, for personnel, requested seventy-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars, for expenses requ- uh, excuse me, recommended seventy-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars. For expenses, requested thirty-eight thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars, recommended thirty-eight thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars. Total for the Libraries, requested one hundred twelve thousand, three hundred two dollars, recommended one hundred twelve thousand, three hundred two dollars. For the James White Memorial Library, for expenses, requested five thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars, recommended five thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars. For the Arts Cultural Council, for expenses, requested two hundred dollars, recommended two hundred dollars. For the Historical Commission, requested five hundred dollars, recommended five hundred dollars. For the Parade and Fireworks, requested three thousand dollars, recommended three thousand dollars. Under Retirement of Debt, for the Freetown Elementary School Principal, I D L excluded, requested five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, recommended five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. For the Flood of Twenty-Ten, Principal, I D L non-excluded debt, requested seventy-five thousand dollars, recommended seventy-five thousand dollars. Total for the Retirement of Debt, requested six hundred thousand dollars, recommended six hundred thousand dollars. For Interest on Long-Term Debt, for Freetown Elementary School Interest, I D L excluded, requested ninety-six thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars, recommended ninety-six thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. For the Flood of Twenty-Ten, Interest, I D L non-excluded, requested ten thousand, five hundred fifty dollars, recommended ten thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Total for Interest on Debt, requested one hundred seven thousand, four hundred dollars, requ- uh, recommended one hundred seven four, thousand, four hundred dollars. For the Surpet Assessment, requested fifteen hundred five dollars, thirty-three cents, recommended fifteen hundred five dollars, thirty-three cents. For Retirement and Pension Contributions, requested seven hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars, recommended seven hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars. For Workers' Compensation Insurance, requested forty-eight thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars, recommended forty-eight thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars. For Unemployment Benefits, requested thirty thousand dollars, recommended thirty thousand For Health Insurance, requested one million, three hundred three thousand, four hundred dollars, recommended one million, three hundred three thousand, four hundred dollars. For Life Insurance, requested one thousand dollars, recommended one thousand dollars. For Medicare, requested fifty thousand dollars, recommended fifty thousand dollars. For Medicare requested fifty thousand dollars, recommended fifty thousand dollars. For court judgments requested two hundred thousand dollars, recommended two hundred thousand dollars. For liability insurance requested forty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars, recommended forty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars. For townwide fueling requested one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, recommended one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. For transfers to trust funds requested zero and recommended zero. We'll take a vote now and then we'll do the capital budget vote. So I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt all of the budget lines as recommended by the finance committee that have not been placed on hold.
Make the motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the finance committee's recommended budget for those lines that are not on hold. Is there any discussion on that? This, this isn't discussion for anything that's on hold, only for the, everything else.
Paul Kruhl, each Freetown. I can wrap my head around as I look at the budget when these, our selectmen and finance committee lower the recommend, what's been requested by the department. But when a department asks for ninety thousand dollars and the board of selectmen and the finance committee recommends fourteen thousand dollars et cetera over that, and there are some others as well, I just wonder if you can offer an explanation as to why somebody's requesting, only asking for X and you're wanting to give them Y. Can you tell me why?
Um, we found it really difficult this year. We had a lot of people leaving, um, and we wanted to use our floaters to go into some of those offices. And we found it really difficult to do that because, um, the way the contract read, they're really structured, they couldn't, they had to stay within that office. So by moving money into the selectmen's budget and having a floater available, if an office is short, if somebody's on vacation, we have the ability to move them without really interfering with the contract. That's just one instance.
Are there any other questions on any of the other lines? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. The budget not on hold is adopted by the majority. Uh, for the capital budget before we go back to the holds. And that's at the bottom of that last page. For capital equipment, for leases of police cruisers, request is eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars, recommended eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars. For lease of fire and EMS apparatus requested one hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars twenty-one cents, recommended one hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars twenty-one cents. For lease of highway vehicles and equipment requested sixty-eight thousand two hundred forty-one dollars twenty-five cents, recommended sixty-eight thousand two hundred forty-one dollars twenty-five cents. Total for capital equipment requested three hundred thirty-two thousand fifty-nine dollars forty-six cents, recommended three hundred thirty-two thousand fifty-nine dollars forty-six cents. For capital building improvements, for town building improvements requested forty-four thousand five hundred dollars, recommended forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. For fire station improvements requested fifteen thousand dollars, recommended fifteen thousand dollars. For police station improvements requested twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars, recommended twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars. Total for capital building improvements requested eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars, recommended eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. As for a motion to adopt the finance committee's recommendation for the capital improvement and capital equipment budget.
The motion to approve is read.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the capital equipment and capital building improvements budgets as recommended by the finance committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Capital budget is adopted unanimously. We will now go back to page one of the budget. The first hold was on the assessors department. Somebody would need to make a motion on a number. I'd have a motion before we can talk about it.
Can you just clarify what needs to happen?
You've just got, you've got, somebody's got to make a motion for what they think the budget should be.
Should I stand up or?
Just, just project.
Sheila Skiduto, precinct two, one of the assessors. I would like to increase, uh, the personnel line.
There's a microphone, please. We need to hear the moderator.
Okay, sorry.
You can raise that.
You're the only people to shout out questions.
Sheila Skiduto, precinct two, and I'm a member of the board of assessors. Oh, thank you. On the personnel total, the board of assessors had requested a total of seventy-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars is what was, uh, recommended by apparently the selectmen and the finance committee, and that's ten thousand dollars below what we have requested.
So your, your motion is to, to have what you requested?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the motion is for the assessors for personnel to be adopted at seventy-two thousand nine fifty-nine, for expenses to be adopted at fourteen thousand three hundred fifty, and for the total to be adopted at eighty-seven thousand three hundred nine dollars. Basically, the motion is, is to appropriate what they asked for, what the request was. Is there a second on that? Okay, the motion has a second. Uh, the motion is made and seconded that the assessors personnel line be adopted at the requested amount and the other lines be, uh, the expense line be adopted at the recommended amount. Is there any discussion on that question?
Yes. Through the moderator.
Okay. Um, I heard you before.
Okay.
Lisa go and then I'll let you go.
This will, um, this is, this is gonna revert back to the last question that I just answered. Um, we put extra money into the town administrator account to have a floater in case of the possibility that one office was down. Um, that's why we did that. We did ask, um, through our town administrator, um, when we discussed the budgets, um, if they needed this amount of money, it was conveyed to both the board of selectmen and the finance committee that they did not because they didn't need the extra person in the office at this time. Um, so we moved the floater into the town administrator's position, um, in case we have, in cases of flux of work, we'll be able to move somebody in there. But right now, we felt that, um, at this time that they didn't need the full-time person or the part-time person in there every single day of the week.
Answer my question. Okay. Uh, is there any more discussion on the motion?
Yes. Uh, this is to fund the position, uh, the part-time position that was, um, the person who was terminated in the office, and the board of assessors feels that it's important to fill the position and is, it's important in order to the, for the office to run smoothly.
We had some, when I say we, uh, we had discussions with, uh, the assistant assessor.
Yes.
And, uh, she has been doing a fine job there, and I believe she told me that she did not need any additional assistance. We had some discussion with the assistant assessor and, uh, with the loss of that individual, uh, who was working, uh, I think it was ten hours a week in that office. Uh, I think Karen felt that she was able to handle the situation and if she needed help, she, we would get it through a floater. Uh, that's why, uh, we made a decision, when I say we, the board made the decision, the finance committee made the decision to, uh, take those ten hours and put them in the, uh, the bank where the floaters are, and that way we could provide help throughout the entire town hall when the department's shorthanded or need help. So that was the rationale for that.
Can I answer that question? I think that Karen did not want a floater because a lot of the, um, tasks that are done by our office are specialized, and the person who was terminated was trained, and it took, uh, a long time to train that person. So it's not really the type of position that you can just have a body basically in there. It's really not helpful. Yes, they can answer a phone call and take a message, but that's about it.
The person that was in there wasn't a floater.
The...
Uh, the, the person that was in there was a floater because she was working in one different department.
Right, but she had been working in our department for several years.
We, we still have the ability through the town administrator's office to give you the hours that are necessary, and if you feel that at a time that you need the ten hours per week, we'll be more than happy to fulfill that. But right now, um, after extensive discussion with the town administrator, um, we felt that was, the money is best where it is right now. But we can readdress that in the fall if we feel things are different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question or a discussion on this line? And I should've said before, and so far it's worked out, if you do come up to the microphone for any reason, you just have to state who you are. Uh, so the motion before us is to adopt the assessors personnel line at seventy-two thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars, the expense line at fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, and the total at eighty-seven thousand three hundred nine dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion is defeated. We now need a motion to adopt the recommendation.
Make a motion to approve as recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the assessors budget in the amounts recommended by the finance committee and board of selectmen. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted unanimously. Our next hold... Our next hold looks to be on page six for the regional school assessment. So just to review on the regional school assessment, we adopted the debt line, we did not adopt the regional assessment line because there was a hold on that line. So somebody has a motion on that line.
Paul Sadik, ninety, Dr. Brayley wrote on the selectman. Uh, the reason I put a hold on this is because, uh, at the end of last week, we received some, uh, revised figures regarding the transportation allotment that's coming down from the state. Uh, consequently, that line, uh, we're gonna, we wanna change that line, uh, from nine million two hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars to reflect nine million two hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Uh, that reflects the, uh, the, uh, additional money coming in from the state, and I believe the, uh, the school committee is on board with that.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded to adopt the, uh, Freetown Lakeville Regional School District Regional Assessment in the amount of nine million two hundred thirteen thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Line is adopted unanimously. Uh, the next hold on the top of page seven is for the cemetery commission budget. So do we have a motion for a figure on that?
Mr. Moderator, if I could, I would like to make a motion that the cemetery request be the, uh, be the approved budget amount, which is the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the cemetery commission budget in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Paul Kruhl, this Freetown, Kevin, could you, uh, explain?
End of microphone. Yeah.
Could you please explain, Kevin, where some of this is, there's a name for it?
To answer your question directly, Kevin, to our cemetery commission, uh, eighteen, uh, East Public Street or so on. Uh, Paul, the nineteen thousand dollar request, uh, five thousand, that would be for mapping of the plots and boundaries. Uh, we, we have a, uh, we have a cemetery on the other side of town that we newly created, and we need to plot, plot out, we have all the individual, uh, internal plots that would be. Uh, twelve thousand dollars would be for mowing, and another two thousand dollars for operating expense, which, uh, include postage, seed, fertilizer, signage, that kind of thing. Just a little bit of information, there are fifty total, there are about cemeteries in town of which, we're responsible for forty of them in some way, shape, or form. We maintain about fifteen of them as best we can. Uh, we are obligated under state statute to, uh, to maintain and provide flags and, and placards at, uh, veteran cemeteries, all veteran cemeteries. We do the best job we can, we get flags out there as best we can, but in some instances, maintenance has been deferred, if you will, over many, many years, and quite honestly, it needs our attention. As recently as, I'm sorry, as recently as a few years ago, it was costing us down near eighteen thousand dollars just to mow the Asana burial ground. Fortunately, the, the highway superintendent, highway surveyor, has allowed his guys to go down there and take care of that for us. So that saved us some money, but it still only leaves us twelve thousand dollars to, to do all the other fifteen. And that's just, that's mowing, that's tree limbs, that's fall cleanup, that's spring cleanup. Unfortunately, we're only allowed to spend, uh, the interest on, uh, the purchase of perpetual care money. So you may hear a number, it's, we have a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in our perpetual care, but of which we can only use approximately fifteen hundred dollars in interest. That's estate law, we can't do anything about it. So hands are tied. So quite honestly, I'm coming to you and I'm asking you if you folks would be so kind as to honor our request for the nineteen thousand dollars so that we can do a better job at, at, uh, at maintaining and, and keeping care of our cemeteries. Unfortunately, we're all gonna be in one at some point in time, I would imagine. So I would like to think that after we're there, there's somebody to be looking out for ours too. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Phil McHew, Sonnet. I've been living...
Hold, hold, hold on a second. Lee took the floor first. Lee took the floor first.
Paul Shobin. I'd just like to comment on one thing. Originally, or this year, we required from the people who cut the grass to provide insurance, something we hadn't done in the past. And, uh, that decreased the expenses of, of cutting quite a bit because there, we were told there wasn't many people in town had insurance. So as a chairman of the board of selectmen, I had a little problem with that. We were told that bids went out to people. Then we also were told by people that said bids went out that they were never, were never contacted for whatever reason. I don't personally have a problem with the ten thousand bucks. Um, by the way, I'm Lee Baugh, I'm Governor of Liberty, eighty-seven, Dr. Brayley wrote. And I don't, and I, and I, I agree that we need the money to, uh, keep our ser, ser, our cemeteries looking wonderful. But we're gonna request that with the ten thousand dollars, the bids go out again through the procurement officer, which is Jack Healy, which is should, which should've happened in the first place. All money goes through Jack. So I would support the ten thousand dollars if we rebid the project, so, because I'm told that there are people with insurance that weren't in the process, and that might save us some money. Thank you.
Thank you.
For three years, I've been aware of cemeteries. In my house, in my yard, I have storage on a temporary basis, the supplies that go to the cemetery. My pickup truck, my personal property, has been used to do all kinds of errands regarding and relation to the cemetery. There are other communities that have cemeteries commissions, and they have cemetery bureaus or whatever, and there are paid personnel. I just heard a mention of some dozens of cemeteries in this town. We don't have a, a cemetery, uh, set up like a lot of these places, and we're talking six or eight, ten thousand dollars for thirty or forty...
eight $10,000 for 30 or 40 cemeteries. I mean, this is nitpicking. If you remember, 13 years ago, 15 years ago, I questioned the senior senate, senior senate, going from $20,000 to $30,000. I said, "You know what? It's the camel getting the head under the tent." Now I see tonight they're looking for a hundred and somewhat, 20, 30,000.
You've got to state your cemeteries.
And other departments, other departments, that, you know, want what they want, and they get it. But this business of nitpicking, we sort of hang, we sit there knowing. I get telephone calls, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning, Saturdays, Sundays, Memorial Days, about this kind of people who don't think that cemeteries are in good enough condition for their deceased. I mean, you know, let's not nitpick over a cemetery. Let's appropriate 40, 50, 60,000. I went to a funeral of my kid brother a couple of weeks ago in Malden. I went to a cemetery. I couldn't believe the cemetery. I couldn't believe the veterans' graves, the way it was set up, the beautiful mold launch and everything else. These cemeteries in this town are disgraceful. Give them some money to do the job right.
Is there any more discussion on the motion?
Mr. Moderator, if I could, Kevin DeMaris again, Cemetery Commission. I would like to address Selectman Vaughn, about his point. Maybe I was remiss in not doing a better job explaining through the budget process of what exactly went on. There was no requirement for insurance. There was a question on the... Excuse me. There was a question on the form that we have available at town hall that asked if they had insurance. There was no requirement. We personally contacted five different interested parties, called and reminded them the bidding was due. Day of, we contacted a couple more, received nothing. So we received one qualified bid. Subsequent to that, because I know there was discussion with the FINCOM and the selectmen's office, we had a meeting with the town accountant to go over if, in fact, the proper bid protocol was followed. The anticipated amount was going to be less than the $10,000 because ordinarily, we've had multiple people bid on it. So none of them would have reached that $10,000 threshold. So we need to use best business practices, and you really just have to contact three or four different people to get the best price. And we could just hire them out and out under the 10 grade. Unfortunately, even those that we reminded the day of to get your bid in didn't bid. And again, there was no requirement for insurance. And in fairness to the gentleman who did win the bids, and I defer to counsel on this, I'm not so sure that we could go out to bid again, particularly now that his bid has become public knowledge. So everyone else would be at an unfair advantage, and I don't know where that would put us. But I can assure that the townspeople and the board of selectmen and the FINCOM, we did follow protocol. Anticipated that it was going to be under the $10,000. We could just hire somebody based on best business practices also, given those amounts. So while I appreciate the fact that a little bit more due diligence should have been done, maybe, and maybe a better consultation through the procurement officer, and I assure you next time that will happen. And I will apologize publicly for the misperception and the confusion that went on during the budget process. Unfortunately, I wasn't there in the means to better explain exactly how it went down. Again, I just respectfully request that we get the increase up to that $19,000 mark as we requested. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Paul Kudobis, Freetown. Just one more question, if I could, excuse me, if I could, for Kevin. Talked about bids going out. Who, with this $19,385, who actually does the cutting and maintaining? Is it the town employees? Is it just somebody paid that this money to?
The amount for mowing would be closer to the $12,000. Again, $5,000 for mapping, which is required, we have to. We have some instances where we might have had encroachment from abutters or migration, if you will, from the cemetery. And again, $2,000 for operating costs associated with that. So the $12,000 for mowing. The Freetown Highway Department, again, has been nice enough to go down to do the Ossana burial ground, which is a big one down in Ossana. But we have multiple others that need attention and need mowing. Some of them get mowed twice, three times a year, others sometimes more frequently, depending on how often they need it. So yes, in those instances, we have been hiring outside help for years. It is... I don't understand why people did not bid when we called them personally and spoke to them and asked them to make sure they bid. You can lead a horse to water, you know? But I feel the gentleman who got the bid wanted fans where, if you will. He followed our requests when he provided his bid documents to us. Quite honestly, he's done some work for us before, and he does a very good job. So that's why we're asking.
I think we really have to support the cemetery operation here without a doubt. But Kevin, the unfortunate thing that happened is that when we met, when I say we, the board of selectmen, the finance committee met the night for the cemetery commission, the representative that came specifically talked about the fact that we required insurance. Consequently, there was only one bidder, and the price of cutting almost doubled. That was the concern that the finance committee and the board of selectmen had. And then subsequent to this, you run into people that had cut the cemeteries over a number of years, and they tell us, "Well, we didn't even know," or "We never got the paperwork." So that raises an issue, at least in my mind, that what's going on? We doubled the cost of cutting the lawn because we're told... No, we didn't pursue this. We were told by the person that represented the cemetery commission at the budget hearing that this was the reason. So what do you expect us to do? We have to go based on what we're told. And then we find out... Hold on. We find out subsequently from people that have cut, that have come forward and complained to different individuals on the board, that, hey, we never even got the bids, that we never even got the paperwork to bid. So that's why you had the issue here. Now certainly, this, with all the respects to the cemetery commission and maintaining our cemeteries, which we have a responsibility to do, it's not the money issue, but really and truly, if you're going to go out and have people bid, everybody should have the same opportunity. And generally speaking, you're not going to come back with one person. That's the problem I have with it. But certainly, I'm going to support the extra $10,000 because it's the thing that we have to do.
Again, I just like... I will publicly apologize. There should have been better clarification to the board of selectmen and the FINCOM relative to how this process went on. But keeping in mind that as general laws, again, Tim, you're here, and the procurement officer's here, if it's less than $10,000, we're just basically required to call up and get a few people's bids. I mean, that's state law. We didn't realize it was going to go to that level. I can promise you next year that we will be more in touch with the procurement officer, the board of selectmen, the FINCOM. I'll be as transparent as I can be, and I'll try to be there for every meeting if I have to be. So I'll take the hit on this one. This was my call.
Any additional discussion? Okay. The motion before us is to adopt the cemetery commission budget in the amount of $19,385. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. And I don't believe we had anything else on hold. So we'll go on to Article Two. For Article Two, similar to with Article One, the board of selectmen and the finance committee are on the same page with the recommendation, and the vote will be to adopt the recommended amount if it's not put on hold. For Article Two, see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the General Laws as amended. For the fiscal year 2016 and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen requires a majority vote. For the moderator, requested $413, recommended $413. For the board of selectmen, requested $6,000, recommended $6,000 each. For the town clerk, requested $51,392 for the year, recommended $49,895 for the year. For the board assessors, requested $4,192 for each member, recommended $4,192 for each member. For the tree warden, requested $20.18 per hour, recommended $20.18 per hour. For the highway surveyor, there is a modification to this because the requested number no longer matches what was voted at the special town meeting. So the request should read $62,719, and the recommended figure is $62,719. And for the regional school committee, for each... For the regional school committee, for the requested amount is $1,106 for each member, and the recommended amount is $1,106 for each member.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Mr. Moderator? Yes. Which column are we asking folks to vote on? We are voting on the recommended number, which for both boards was the same number. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is adopted unanimously. Article Three, see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $2,000, to pay for the purpose of supporting the sexual assault and domestic violence program of the Bedford Women's Center, Inc., and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the board of selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $455, to pay for insect pest control and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the board of selectmen requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
Mr. Moderator, if I may. We need to specify a funding source, raise and appropriate, or transfer available funds. I believe it's going to be a raise and appropriate from taxation.
Yeah, he did. He said at the beginning that he...
Okay. I apologize. I missed that, but I wanted to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Well, it's a good reminder. Anything for the rest of the town meeting, if it doesn't specify otherwise, it's something from taxation. We had the recommendations. Do we have a motion? We had the motion.
We had the motion.
Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's... Articles are adopted unanimously. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $9,393, to cover the cost associated with training fire department emergency medical technician, EMT-1, to meet the National Emergency Medical Scope of Practice, EMT Advanced Requirements, as adopted by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the board of selectmen and the fire chief, and it requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws for the following programs and purposes: to determine whether such revolving fund accounts shall be credited with the following departmental receipts; to determine whether the following boards, departments, or officers shall be authorized to expend amounts from such revolving fund accounts; and to determine whether the maximum amounts that may be expended from such revolving fund accounts in the fiscal year 2016 shall be the following amounts or any other amounts, and/or take any action relative thereto. For the board of selectmen, to be spent by the board of selectmen or the town administrator from fees from the sale of advertising space within the annual town report, to offset the cost of compiling and printing the annual town report, a limit of $500. For the communications center, to be spent by the chief of police or the fire chief, to be received from fees from residential and commercial burglar and fire alarm subscribers, used to offset the cost of phone lines, postage, and other related costs, a limit of $595. For the police department, to be spent by the chief of police from fees collected from police exam test takers, for to offset the cost of purchasing and administering the written examination and other related costs, a maximum of $100. And for the recreation department, to be spent by the board of health, to be received from fees from the long pond boat ramp users, to be used to offset the cost of operation and maintenance of the boat ramp, the amount of $3,770. This is submitted by the board of selectmen, and it requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article Seven, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $20,000, for the purpose of maintaining, preparing, preserving, and safekeeping the permanent records, the permanent town of Freetown records located in the town clerk's office, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the town clerk and requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $40,000, to fund one-third the cost of the Recertification of Values Program, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $9,500, to pay for the annual software license and web hosting of assessors' values that is provided by Paul Kapinos and Associates, Inc., submitted by the board of selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $20,000, to purchase play structures for various parks throughout the town, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the board of selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Voted unanimously. Article Eleven, see if the town will vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 115, Section 9, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $350, for the maintenance of veterans' graves and/or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the cemetery commission requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommend.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Seconded.
I'm a motion and a second to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's voted unanimously. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $2,000 from the sale of cemetery lots account to be used by the cemetery commission for improvements to the Ossana burial ground, to include surveying of existing prepared land, marking out lots, clearing new areas, performing maintenance, and improving roads and access, including any costs incidental and related thereto. any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the cemetery commission and requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommends.
Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Make a motion to approve is read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article is adopted unanimously. For Article 13, I was asked to note that the indirect expenses, those funds were already appropriated under Article 1. This article will affirm that vote without raising any additional money. And also where you see the mathematical equation and the total line is printed as $522,513, that's a typo, it should be $522,613. So that's the way that it will be written. Article 13, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of money to operate the Water and Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year 2016. For direct expenses, personnel expenses, $75,897. For expenses, $447,604.3. Total, $522,613. And that $522,613 be raised from Water Enterprise revenues. $522,613 to come from Water Enterprise revenues. Excuse me, $31,536 to be raised and appropriated from the general fund operating budget allocated to the Enterprise Fund for funding, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission and requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommends.
Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Make a motion to approve is read.
Select.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to borrow pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, $75,000 for the purposes of completing DEP mandated compliance and improvements at the filter site located on South Main Street, including but not limited to design, engineering, implementation, and any other costs incidental and related thereto, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission and it requires a 2/3s vote. Finance committee?
Recommends.
Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Make a motion to approve is read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is adopted unanimously. For Article 15, again, note that the indirect expenses were already appropriated under Article 1. This will disaffirm that vote. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of money to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year 2016. Direct expenses, personnel expenses, $5,628.48. Expenses, $195, $121.52. Total, $20750. And that $20750 be raised from Sewer Enterprise revenues and/or take any action relative thereto. $20750 to come from Sewer Enterprise revenues, $1,474 to be raised and appropriated in the general fund operating budget and allocated to the Enterprise Fund for funding. This is submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission and requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommends.
Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Make a motion to approve is read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is, article is adopted unanimously. Article 16, see if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town Protective Bylaws. Article 11, zoning bylaws, table of contents section, to include reference to Section 11.30, Science and Technology Overlay District, such amendments as on file in the office of the town clerk, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the planning board, requires a 2/3s vote. Finance committee?
No recommendation.
Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Will now hear a report from the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, Kevin Demarex, 18 East Public Street Chairman, Free Town Planning Board. After a duly noticed public hearing, the Free Town Planning Board voted to recommend this change. Basically, it's a housekeeping change. Last special town meeting in October, we made some provisions for the, an area up by Invision Way for the Science and Technology Overlay District, there for the types of businesses that would be looking to locate there. We just want to put them in our table of use, make it easier, open it up, you can see where, what the use is, where it's allowed, or whether it requires a special permit. So it's basically housekeeping. It's just the table of contents, yeah. Yes, yes. For clarification, we're just putting that into the table of contents.
That's okay. We do need a motion on the article.
I'll make a motion to approve is read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. For Article 17, I'd like to ask for a motion to waive the reading of the article.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to waive the reading of the article. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank God. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town Protective Bylaw, Article 11, zoning bylaws, Section 11.11B1, by deleting the strike-through text and asserting the underline text as follows and further, to amend the zoning map to include the revised floodplain overlay district boundaries and/or take any action relative thereto. And the summary was that this article will change our existing zoning bylaws to incorporate changes made to the town's flood maps. These changes must be made in order for the town to avoid being suspended from participating in the National Flood Insurance Program. This was submitted by the planning board, it requires a 2/3s vote. Finance committee?
No recommendation.
Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Make a motion to approve is read.
Second.
We do need the report of the planning board. But we have that motion?
Second verse, same as the first. After duly noticed public hearing, Free Town Planning Board recommended adoption. Quite succinctly, if we do not adopt this, we will not be able to get, residents will not be able to get FEMA flood insurance, and that's not good. So, thanks.
Is there any further discussion on the article? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. Article 18, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash, the sum of $185,000, to fund the first-year cost items, excuse me, contained in the collective bargaining agreements between the town of Free Town and the Free Town Town Hall, Library, Highway Department, public employees, local union 1144, Free Town Full Town Firefighters Association, Free Town Police Association, 911 Signal Operators, public employees, local union 1144, which has the term of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2018, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the board of selectmen and requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
Recommends.
The board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Make a motion to approve is read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. The article is read. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's so voted. Article 19, would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion. Yes.
Oh, I want to hear him say everything.
Motion and a second to waive the reading of Article 19. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The motion is adopted with the firefighters' union in dissent.
This article, which will amend the bylaw, as you see, just cleans up some wording, some wording changes in the article that allows us to elect everybody that you see here up on the stage and half the people that have talked down there tonight. It was submitted by the town clerk, it requires a majority vote. Finance committee?
No recommendation.
Oh, you want, I was going to do that after, sorry. I'm sorry, the finance committee?
No recommendation.
Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
All right, we do have an amendment. The town clerk is going to move now for an amendment.
I make a motion that we amend Article 19 by striking the words, "Commencing with the 2012 Annual Town Election, four members from both towns shall be elected for initial terms as follows, as follows: two for three-year terms, one for a two-year term, and one for a one-year term." And inserting, "Commencing with the 2012 Annual Town Election, the following members shall be elected from among residents and registered voters of Lakeville, two members for three-year terms, one member for a two-year term, and one member for a one-year term. In addition, the following members shall be elected from among residents and registered voters of Free Town, one member for a three-year term, two members for a two-year term, and one member for a one-year term." And just to explain a little bit on that, the reason why it was, there was written a little bit incorrectly, the way it's written now will be in accordance with the special legislation that was already approved, and this was back in 2012. So it's just a little bit of housekeeping that the way it's worded matches the special legislation.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to amend the article with the amendment that you just heard? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The amendment is adopted. I now need a motion to adopt the article as amended.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the article as amended. Anything on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of money to be deposited into the stabilization fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a 2/3s vote, and these funds will be raised by taxation. Does the selectman have a figure?
$425,000.